Thank you. Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the City of Revere Council Meeting, February 24th, 2025. Could everyone stand to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please roll call the members.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Swaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Coram is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of February 3rd?
Madam Clerk, if we could please suspend the rules to bring up the zoning for the Caruso parking structure? Suspension of rules, all in favor or opposed?
All in favor.
So ordered.
Under suspension of rules, the City Council is taking up the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Agenzio. Ah, Zambudo, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everybody knows, we just met in the zoning Subcommittee to go over the special permit, The committee voted favorably, and I would ask for a roll call.
Could I just ask one question, Mr. President?
Right ahead.
Counselor.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that I'm not quite certain how many businesses are actually operating there under the Caruso construction umbrella. Will they all be out of operation when this Park and Fly garage opens? That's my only question. If someone could answer that, thank you.
Counselor.
Mr. President, I can answer to a point, but the reason I supported it is because it eliminates the biggest and most offensive use. I'm not sure, I'm someone from the legal team.
Understand, Counselor, but I don't know if that answers the Counselor's question.
It doesn't, but thank you.
Thank you. So, all of the current businesses on the site would be eliminated, and the only business would be the proposed commercial parking structure.
Okay, thank you.
Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. So, I actually am in favor of this project, and for one main reason. I think it gives us the basis of the start of a redevelopment of Squire Road, having that parking structure in there that can park cars. It's probably not too many public knowledge, but we have students right now from the development of Harvard University in the city, and they're looking over Squire Road and coming up with ideas. And just having that structure built in that spot is perfect for that, the structure and the project moving forward. So that's why I'm in favor, and I just wanted to add that. If we could roll call the members.
Mr. President, can I just?
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you for the leeway. Could we just, I'm not, I'm not, would there be cause to have that as a condition on the special permit, just to make sure that all the other businesses will be out of business by the time this Park and Fly is in operation?
Again, to reiterate, there will be nothing operating on this parcel other than this structure, once the structure is up and operating, so that we're clear about that, this entire parcel.
Will that be in the special permit somewhere in writing?
I'm not sure you could.
As a condition?
You're asking for a condition that a construction site and a parking, and that an automotive repair shop not operate where a building is going to go. So I think there, I guess my point is that mutually exclusive, if we have a building on the lot, you're not going to have any other use there. So I don't know really how to do that. I think that's what the special permit is for, so it's not for a mixed use of commercial enterprises. The special permit is only for the Park and Fly.
Right, but if that's taking up all of the land that's there, then I can understand that.
It is, right.
It is?
It is. Yeah, and it's attached as an exhibit.
I think we've covered that in session.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yep.
I just wanted clarification.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, can we roll call the members?
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review? Councilor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to those conditions.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
While we're on suspension rules, can I ask for a point of personal privilege?
Please, just please.
Thank you. Mr. President, and everybody listening that's here, this past weekend, we had a tragic loss of two young ladies that live in the City of Revere, and one young lady lived in Malden. And they were on vacation in Belize, and they were found in their hotel room, deceased. One of the young ladies was actually my tenant, lives in my house. So it really hits me close for that one. The other young lady lives on Finley Street, and it's devastating to the family, and the three Moroccan girls that were in the, going into the medical field, going to Salem State College, and on vacation, they're coming home the wrong way. There are no details on what happened. We don't know when they're coming home, you know, how they're coming home, not the way we want them to. But we want to thank Congressman, Congresswoman Clark, and Senator Markey for working on making things easier to have them returned, and getting a flight for the three of them to come home together. They went together, they should be coming home together. The families, again, are devastated. I've had hundreds and hundreds of folks coming to my house, knocking on my door, thinking it's their door. And I have to get up all the time and have to instruct them that they have to go upstairs. Very sad. And I would like to make, on their behalf, have everybody rise for a moment of silence and remember them. And may I say, Mr. President, so everybody knows, if they go on Facebook, and I think it was on T, on Major News Tonight of what happened, but there is a GoFundMe page for all three young ladies, and if anybody would like to go on the GoFundMe page, it's not going to be an easy task for the families to catch up on what it's going to cost to make all this happen. So if you go on CityRevere, revere.org has the site, and my Facebook has the site, and I know I sent it out to my City Councilors and the School Committee folks to help remember and help the families move along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Back to the regular order of business.
Public hearings, calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere, repealing the definition and use of mechanical parking systems.
Do we have any proponents? Any proponents?
Sorry, what was that?
Proponents?
In favor? Mechanical parking structures. Okay. Any opponents? Any opponents? Okay, we'll close that side. Any counselors?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance allowing mechanical parking stackers was adopted in 2020, and it was intended to address parking shortages creatively, but it has become a loophole that undermines parking requirements. Developers propose these stackers to gain initial approval for projects that do not meet parking requirements with the promise to install the stackers later. Yet, as the project's near completion, the developers cite reasons like soil conditions or cost to abandon the stackers and not install them. The ZBA then grants variances to developers, leaving the finished development with fewer parking spaces than even the reduced number originally promised. Clear examples of this are at 344 Salem Street and 791 Broadway, where developers proposed mechanical parking stackers in order to create minimum parking requirements and gain project approvals, only to later request and receive ZBA approval to abandon the stackers. This resulted in both of these projects having fewer spaces than even the original plans promised. But this isn't about neighborhoods demanding the stackers, it's about developers exploiting the ordinance as a loophole and using the same playbook. In all, there have been three projects requesting stackers upfront in order to gain approvals, but later, all three developers asked to dodge installing the stackers and excuses like, using excuses like cost and feasibility. If parking promises are made, they must be enforced, and since we clearly see that they aren't, the ordinance must be repealed to prevent further exploitation. It's a clear bait-and-switch tactic that reduces accountability, exacerbates parking scarcity in Revere, and prioritizes developers' convenience over community needs. Repealing the ordinance would close this loophole, forcing developers to meet parking requirements upfront and stick by them, with feasible and forcible plans ensuring promises made are promises kept. Lastly, there's the issue of safety. I've personally witnessed some City Councilors speaking on behalf of developers at ZBA hearings, citing that they have safety concerns with these mechanisms, which support the developer's arguments for not having to install them. Therefore, this is just another reason which supports the repeal of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with a lot of what Counselor Kelly just said. Through you, Mr. President, to Counselor Kelly, did you say we only, were there only three projects in the city that have stackable parking right now?
To my knowledge, three developers requested the stackers upfront, but two of all three actually requested to not, requested relief to not have to install them after the developments were, you know, pretty much at completion. So they can't reduce the number of units at that point, but the number of parking spaces.
So the reason I, does anyone know off the top of their head the number of developments that we have right now that have stackable parking in it?
Zero.
There's zero?
From what I understand?
Oh, there is, Washington now?
Oh, Washington, I'm sorry.
Okay. So my opinion is that we get rid of stackable parking, we need to get rid of this ordinance, and I understand that this may make this property nonconforming, which you could argue that it will lower the value of the property, but if we don't do this now, what's to stop everybody else from doing what Counselor Kelly just said, in regards to getting stackable parking, coming back, getting rid of the stackable parking, and now we don't have parking spaces? It happened in my ward, unfortunately, so I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't usually take a position and then go back on it, but this is one of those cases, one of those rare cases. And the reason is, if you, if you put this in effect now, you have a developer that spent a ton of money, got the parkers, put them in because he was denied relief from the zoning board, the other, the other developer got relief twice. You make this property a nonconforming property. Anybody that has parkers, stackers, will be nonconforming. So it's a, it's a penalty that I don't think I can live with. So I've changed my position. I used to be, for eliminating stackers, now I'm not, and that's my main reason, is because now the property becomes a nonconforming property. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Swaya.
I agree with a lot of what Counselor Kelly said as well. I am, I am one of the counselors that is extremely against the stacker parking, and that's because I'm afraid of the electric vehicles being in there and what it would cause if residents lived above the mechanical parking stackers or next to it, and God forbid, a car would go up in flames, and then the fire department really does not know how to extinguish an electrical fire that's in one of those EV vehicles. So I am against the parking stackers, and I will be voting for a favorable recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, at first, I thought it was a good idea, when we first voted this at the very beginning. But now that I see what's going on and what I went through personally with stackers in Boston, it's definitely a big safety issue. I'm not concerned about making them nonconforming or anything like that. I'm concerned about the safety, the primary reason. So when vehicles go on that top level and something happens, forget about it. I was waiting an hour and a half before they can get a mechanic to get my car out of the Mass General Hospital. And that time, I had my wife in a wheelchair with oxygen. It was just horrible, and I want to get rid of that. I don't want to allow anymore in the city. If there's one here now, God bless them, good luck to them, but I don't want to see anymore, and I will be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? This would be referred to zoning.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending Chapter 2.57 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Revere relative to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Any proponents?
Hi, Rose Burns, 281 Broadway, Mayor's Office.
Thank you.
Just asking for your support for this motion, I mean, not this motion, this amendment to this ordinance. We put a lot of work into making sure it, you know, looks right, it's in line with the other ordinances that we have for other boards and commissions, and we're hoping that this runs smoothly and similarly. And we have also submitted the amendment for Council Hermio's request to add explicitly one member of Revere youth, so that will also be included in part of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any other proponents? Proponents?
Proponent, Claire Anzirillo, 281 Broadway, Solicitor's Office. I just want to back up Rose and the Mayor's Office. They consulted with the Solicitor's Office on best practices for our boards and commissions. It's hard, our city's so big, and it seems like we have so many boards and commissions, but we do struggle to fill them. Some are more popular than others, everybody wants to be on the ZBA or the License Commission, but we do struggle to fill some of these other ones, so we try to err on the side of vagueness when we are creating the composition and delegating who's going to be on what board. So we prefer things to be a little bit more general while still saving space for those specifications such as what Council Hermio requested. So kind of finding that fine line between being really specific about who we want, but then not having those types of folks available. So this ordinance before you and the amendments from the Mayor's Office represent kind of a good balance between what we want the board and commission to be versus what we know in practice we end up with for our boards and commissions, because most of them are volunteer spots, so keep that in mind.
Thank you, Claire. Any other proponents?
Michael Tucker, 9 Elaton Street. I think this is very well written, and I'm in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Any other proponents? Proponents? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone against?
Is this about the class?
No, this is about the recreation, Park and Recreation Board, the Youth Board for Recreation Department.
Oh, it's about the board? I thought it was about the rec.
Uh, no.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor.
If I understand, the ordinance does add the director to the Parks and Rec Commission, so is that what you're asking about? Yeah.
Are you a proponent or an opponent?
Well, I'm not totally. Thank you. So I'm not totally against it.
Name an address, please.
Mary Gendoff, Washington, every year.
Thank you.
What I wanted to know, because what I read about, is it a new, new position?
No, it's, so it's, it's, what this is doing is, is creating a youth and adult board for our rec department.
What about the director?
What the language is stating is that the director, who's the director now, will be part of that board.
Okay, so it's not a new position?
It's not a new position.
Not a new?
No, we're not getting a new director, we're not, right.
Okay, that's what I want to know, because we have a very expensive high school coming.
Understand, thank you. Could you just shut the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Do I press it?
Please.
I don't.
Thank you very much. Any counselors? City counselors? Counsel Hermio.
Yeah, no, really appreciate the work of the Mayor's Office on this, and look forward to, for the, look forward to seeing the council vote in, in support of this.
Thank you, and this will go to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on a zoning ordinance further amending accessory dwelling unit regulations in the City of Revere.
Proponents? Tom.
Good evening, counselors. Tom Skarowski, 281 Broadway, Chief of Planning, Community Development. As indicated in the letter that I submitted along with these zoning changes in January, in August of 2024, Governor Healey signed the Affordable Homes Act, and one of the things the Affordable Homes Act did was create a requirement that all municipalities allow accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Some people might know them as in-laws, units, or granny flats, or so on and so forth. They all must be allowed by right in single-family zones throughout the Commonwealth. And so what we are trying to do with this amendment is to make sure that our local ordinance is aligned with this new state regulation that requires us to allow ADUs to be permitted by right in single-family zones. It also prohibits us from unreasonably regulating ADUs, and that includes imposing restrictions on owner occupancy requirements for the principal dwelling. That includes restrictions related to parking if it's within a half mile of a transit station. That includes restrictions on size, and restrictions on whether it can be a detached unit or actually has to be attached within the building. To make a long story short, the state regulations require that we treat an ADU, from a dimensional standpoint, from a youth standpoint, the same as a single-family home in that same district would be treated. One thing it does allow us to do in terms of prohibitions, it, it does allow us to continue to have prohibitions on short-term rentals. So even though we're mandated to allow accessory dwelling units by right, we're not required to do so for the purpose of short-term rentals. So this law went into effect February 2nd. Unlike the MBTA communities, which I know some of you were working with us on a few years back, that created a hard and fast compliance deadline. If we didn't comply, we got fined, we, we had grant funding withheld from us, so on and so forth. This isn't a hard and fast deadline in that same respect. What this is basically, as of February 2nd, our local ordinance became obsolete, and it's superseded by this new state regulation. So our building commissioner and building inspectors are prepared and understand how to regulate ADUs based off of these state regulations, but we wanted to wait a little bit of time to make sure we had some guidance from the state as to what the final regulations would look like. When I submitted this, January 22nd, we still didn't know what the final regulations would be. And secondly, I noted in my letter that there will be a model ADU bylaw that would come out from the state. So since I submitted that letter, one of those two things did happen. The state released their final regulations that went public as of January 30th. That will require a few changes as to what you all are looking at this evening. Most importantly, they classified a bus stop as a transit station before there was some ambiguity about that. And what that essentially means is anywhere within a half mile of a bus stop, we cannot require parking for an ADU, and effectively, that means almost all the city. So that's one major change that we'd need to tweak. A second is, this is actually one that is in our favor. The way the law was written originally, it seemed to suggest that we would need to allow additional accessory dwelling units on the same lot to be allowed by special permit. The new regulations clarify that that could just be an option we could opt into or opt out of. I think in our case, we would opt out of that, and we would want just one ADU per, per lot. And then the third is a little bit more controversial, and this is why we didn't put it in the law until we knew clearly that this was what the state intended to do. But ADUs will be allowed on any structure, so not just a single-family home. So this could be an apartment building as well, as long as it's within a single-family zone, ADUs are permitted by right. So we're going to need to tweak that, those three components to conform with the state regulations. We have not yet done that, and, and what you have in front of you does not reflect those changes as of January 30th, and that's because we want to wait until the model bylaw comes through from the state, just to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, and we're only making these changes once. There is still some ambiguity as to dimensional standards for ADUs, design standards, because it says we can't unreasonably regulate, but it isn't super clear about what we can do that would be considered reasonable. And it also is a little bit, there's a little bit of ambiguity about nonconforming lots as well. So, long story short, we put an initial amendment together that's in front of you tonight. We'll be making some tweaks based off of the regulations that we have as of January 30th. We'll be making some more once we have that final bylaw, the model bylaw from the state, which we anticipate receiving in another week or two. So I would suggest that whether or not this public hearing is closed, when it gets referred to zoning Subcommittee, which I imagine it will, we perhaps might want to wait a few more weeks to make sure that model bylaw is out and live, so we can make sure that our ordinance aligns well with that and what those expectations are, because I don't want to come back in front of the council in a few months asking to change it again to make sure we're doing it the right way. So at that, happy to take any questions, if you have them.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Haas.
Thanks, Mr. President. Tom, thanks so much.
Any, any other proponents? No, good call. Any other proponents? Opponents? Anyone against? Opposed? Are you opposed?
I do have issues. I have a few questions if I could ask. A couple of things I wanted to know about.
Can you lower the microphone, please?
Oh, you can't hear me? I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
Thank you. I had a few things I wanted to mention and a few things I wanted to ask about. As far as parking, I see that it has to do with they have MBTA nearby, that, you know, they don't feel it would be an issue. But I want to remind everyone that everyone has visitors, everyone has a visitor once in a while, and I am hearing so much from many people around the city, how they can't find a spot near their house or in front of their house, there's so many people parking all the time. We've overbuilt, that's what I'm saying on that. The other thing is the heat pumps, and I don't know if they'll use heat pumps, but I have two next door to me now in the last few months. They're horrible, they're noisy, near my bedroom, they're terrible. So it's really not fun. And the question, you know, I want to mention too, you know, I know that they, it stated that. it stated that single-parent seniors, families of grown children, it's not necessarily someone's family who's moving into these. It could be someone renting, you know, whatever. The thing is, I think that a lot, I just want people to remember that though we want to help people, and I understand, not everyone can live in Revere. We have overbuilt for a couple of years now. The schools, the high school won't even have enough room by the time it's built to support these people. We are running out of doctors and nurses in the state. We have an, we really have an overpopulation problem in Revere. There's too many people, there's not enough. I mean, I have a friend, I have friends who don't have a primary care doctor and cannot find one. So we're not helping those problems by creating more living space. Yes, I want people to live, but there's a whole big country out there, and not everyone can come to Revere. We just can't. I mean, we're overcrowded. The, the streets are so overcrowded, you can't go anywhere. You can't get out of your driveway. No, it's true, I'm sorry.
No, I understand, but you, you have 30 more seconds, ma'am.
Okay, um, I wanted to ask, it's, it mentions bedroom, kitchen, and bathroom. How many bedrooms are these, um, sorry, sir, how many bedrooms are they allowed to put in? Please.
So I, I don't believe we're allowed to restrict the number of bedrooms per se. Where the restriction comes in is you can restrict half of the gross square footage of the principal dwelling unit, or 900 square feet, whichever is less. So for all intents and purposes, it wouldn't be bigger than 900 square feet, and then you'd have to back into what a reasonable bedroom size would be, given building code requirements and so forth. So probably reasonably, nothing would be bigger than two bedrooms. We don't know that for sure, nor can we.
Tom, is this, is this a state regulation?
It is. The question was that we have to have them built, or if somebody applies, we have to have them built, and it's a second. So our local ordinance, as it stands today, is obsolete. The state's rules that say we need to allow this by right currently apply. So if anyone were to apply to build an accessory dwelling unit currently in the city, we couldn't look at our local regulations, we'd have to look at the state, which those regulations state, we have to allow it by right in any single-family zoning district, which is any district where single-family homes are allowed by right in the city, which is effectively almost all the city. So we would be required to allow it to be built, but you still need to meet building code, fire code, all the other code requirements. So you couldn't, you know, in a 900-square-foot building, put five bedrooms in, because that wouldn't comply to code, once you put all the square footage together with all the other requirements of bathrooms and kitchens and so forth. So you can't just do whatever you want, you have to follow a series of other regulations. Zoning just can't be one of those impediments.
Thank you.
I'll just end with this. There again, I want you to realize, schoolchildren, parking is a big problem.
Ms. Gendolfo, I, I appreciate your point, but also want to make it clear that we really, this council really don't have a say in this matter.
No, I understand that, I understand it, but it, it just that, you know, everything has to work together. Whatever we do here affects a lot of other things. People don't realize it, but it does.
Yep.
I know that it's, it's some kind of thing in the programs, but it's, it's, it doesn't work for everyone, and I think people want to enjoy their backyards without everyone encroaching.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other opponents? Opponents?
Question, Mr. President. Ed Terrell, 70th Soul Street, Revere, Mass. Will these units be allowed to be an Airbnb?
No, they will not be allowed to be short-term rentals.
Okay. I mean, we have really no say over this, but the issue of overdevelopment needs to really be addressed. In 2006, 2007, the council had three or four opportunities to look at the disadvantages of overdevelopment, and the council declined. I really encourage the council to revisit that. The quality of life of our residents is going right down the hill. Now, I understand that the city gets $3,000 to $6,000 per new unit, but that is negligible compared to the, the cost of our infrastructure. Dr. Kelly has already testified that our schools are overcrowded. When does it end? I really encourage the council to step up. This is an election year. The council is very unpopular, I'm sad to say, you're all my friends, but you're very, very unpopular. And a lot of you may be voted out, I'm sorry. The council.
That's why we take these positions.
The council really needs to step up more, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Any other opponents? Anyone else opposed? Counselors? Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thanks so much for that. I had a quick question. So I know you repeated that the city has to wait to see what the model bylaw from the state says.
Yeah, we don't have to, but we're choosing to, just so we're making sure we're aligned with the state.
Okay, so what's the timeline? Say someone puts in a, they want to put in an ADU in their backyard next week, can they just start, can they just start going to work, or do they have to clear it with the city? Do we have any say in that?
So it's a bit of a gray area right now, but traditionally with, with a zoning matter, when a public hearing has been noticed, from the point of that notice until, and I'm sure the clerk will correct me if I'm wrong here, but from the point in which that's noticed to when a decision is made on that zoning, there is technically a zoning freeze where, and that is what the building commissioner is saying to folks. I, I don't think anyone's coming to him right now with their hair on fire, saying they need to build an ADU now, but we're just saying, let's wait till let this play out until our zoning decision's made here.
And from what I read, the most popular aspects of this is someone maybe redoing a garage for a space for your mother-in-law, or a cousin, or something like that, making a space that they can, maybe you build something in your backyard, a kind of like a tiny home type thing?
I think the most prevalent would likely be building within the existing structure and/or a garage. Those would be the two.
And so what are the benefits that you see? You wouldn't have to focus on the cost of new housing. I mean, it could be just a thing for families to take on, even though I'm worried that it might not be family members, it might be just people jacking up the rents, you know, on the ADUs and just renting those out, you know?
Right, I mean, I, I had heard somebody reference nurses and doctors and that we don't have enough. My sister was a nurse, just to make it personal for a second, who worked at Boston Children's in a few different cases, and she was a traveling nurse that came here from time to time over the last two years, and she won't come to Boston again because she can't afford to find a place to live. And she's, she has gone all over the country, but in the meantime, we still have medical needs that we need professionals to take care of. So I do think there is a real housing crisis here that we do need to provide for. I think it does have an additional benefit for owner occupants to make their housing more affordable. And again, if, if, if and when I get an opportunity to buy a single-family home, I'll be thinking of an ADU as an opportunity to supplement my income and afford the home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Agneseo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Skrowski, so just clarify for me, ADUs originally were just for single-family homes. So now any, if you have a two-family home, a three-family home, you can now add an ADU to that?
Theoretically, yes. You would need to, from a dimensional standpoint, still conform to the dimensional requirements of a single-family home.
And so now if you were to create a detached one, you would still have to meet all kinds of setbacks from backyard, side yard?
It would be functionally very difficult to build an ADU that's detached in the city of Revere, unless you were perhaps building in a garage that would be a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Okay. And I, I know in the original ordinance, it said that this was a way for families to make some extra income, and then further down, it said that they're not to be used for commercial purposes. Is, is that still the, how does that?
Are you speaking of our ordinance, our local one? These are the types of changes we would need to make, because, yeah.
So somebody could theoretically have an ADU and not put their family in it, but just rent it out to anyone they so chose?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Grinozwaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, I have a quick question. I know this is going to be mandated by the state and everything. Do they still have to go in front of conservation, for example, in the Point Pines Riverside area, that we are in a flood zone? And if, say, I couldn't add an addition to my house because I'm in a flood zone, and you can't, you can't put an addition in it, would an ADU be able to be stopped in those types of areas?
The best way to think of it is, what a reasonable regulation is meant to be under, under this new rule, is anything that would prohibit you from making these same changes to a single-family home, you would be prohibited from doing with an ADU. So yeah, if you're expanding in the 100-year floodplain, you would still need to go in front of CONSCOM, and if you need any additional variances above and beyond what you're submitting for the ADU, you would still, you know, perhaps need to go to the ZBA in some instances, and building code, fire code, all of those other things.
So it could be stopped at one of those levels?
Yes, one of those levels.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thank you for doing all this work. I just, I'm so against this, I really am, I have been from the beginning. I've been here for 10 years, I've been sitting in the same spot. I fought for parking, I fought for no structures, garages, or any other buildings outside of a family house being developed into a, an apartment. I just, I just, I know it's mandated by the state, but it's just, all the work that we've done in this, in this council for 10 years, it's just going out the window. It, it really is. I mean, we don't have a say, it's ridiculous. We've worked so hard, I've worked so hard in Beauchamp to get every single street on, in Beauchamp permit parking, and that's going to be taken away. And, and the reason, and the reason why I've done that is because people come from Swampscott, and they park in front of Johnny's house that lives on Crescent Dev for nine hours. And that's all going to be taken away. Structures that we just, Counselor Cogliandro and I, two years ago, we tackled, someone wanted to build an apartment building outside of their, in, it was a garage, they wanted to make a, an apartment. We voted it down. We've been doing this for 10, I've been doing this for 10 years, and it's just going to go out the window. So all this work that we've done in this council, it's, it's ridiculous. And then, and I have a, uh, illegal housing apartment next to me, it's a single-family house. So he can come in if he wants to, he's got 30 people living there, and every single, he's got nine bedrooms. He's got 30 people, so now he can come in and put an ADU on it and make it bigger. It's just, it doesn't sit well with me, it hasn't from the beginning. I voted for it just to, you said, you know, everything that you were going to change, it was coming in front of the council, and we had a, a say on it. I'm just not happy with this whole thing, I'm just not. And I do believe the woman, I don't know her name, but she's, she's right, Revere's overcrowded, the quality of, we're losing our quality of life. Traffic is ridiculous, and, and yes, we have to think about the schools. So I don't know, I don't know where you're gonna, how you're gonna get me on board with this, because I'm not on board. I haven't been on board since the beginning, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think it's a secret that I'm not for, I'm not in favor of any of these state mandates, but aside from that, I was told that you could not have an ADU in a floodplain. Am I wrong? Was that bad information? That came from someone that should know zoning better than anybody else.
I would have to clarify that before it goes to Subcommittee. So I, I think it might depend on the type of ADU we're talking about and where it's located with regard to the floodplain.
I was flat-out told that an ADU could not be in a floodzone. In fact, the person that was telling me this was advocating for it to be in a floodzone, so that's why I'm bringing it up, but I'd ask you to check into that.
Thank you for flagging that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're in a lot of trouble with this, and I know it's not your fault, it's not our fault. I'm very worried. I have, I have a 9,000-square-foot lot that my house sits on, the last thing I want to do is build an ADU there, I want my privacy, but I just, if someone has a lot like mine, you could potentially fit two, two of those on there. And I do agree that, let me ask you something. This, this is a law that applies to every city in this state, correct?
Correct.
So I, and, and I always, I always disagreed with them doing this, because Revere is not the same as Ipswich, Revere is not the same as Worcester. So for them to create a law that affects us the same as it would affect somebody else is unfair, in my opinion. Now, my question to you is, is there anything as a council that we can do to combat this? Or are we SOL?
Well, I would say one thing we can do is we can prohibit more than one ADU on a lot, which I think is not in the original regulation, regulations that I submitted to the council, but is something we could tweak, given what was approved, January 30th made clear we're allowed to do that. So that's one very simple thing we can do.
If we're stuck with this, I would be 100% voting in favor of limiting it to one. The other thing is, it was mentioned that people aren't moving here because they can't afford to. Are we going to be controlling the costs of rent in these ADUs so that people can afford to live here, or is it going to be the same pricing as the astronomical rent prices that we're seeing now?
We could perhaps make that decision. I don't know how that would conform with the state requirements. What I will say is, not all housing is equal, right? And it's part of what we talked about in the Housing Production Plan, although, again, I mentioned everything would go in front of you for an approval, this wasn't in the production plan, because this was outside of our control. But one thing I do believe is, you know, whether it's with ADUs, or two families, or three families, some types of housing is just going to be cheaper than that more amenity-rich. The things that are really jacking up the rents, frankly, in Revere are large apartment complexes with a lot of amenities built within, and that's not necessarily the case here. So I think it would be cheaper than your average rent in something like that, just by virtue of what it has to offer versus what it doesn't.
The problem is that people are coming here and paying these rents, and that's why people keep charging the amounts, it's, it's crazy. But I guess the real answer is, we're not going to be controlling the amount of rent. So is building these, in, in a sense, for the reason being that we want people to come here and live here, if they can't afford to live here now, then these aren't going to be, these units aren't going to be any different, in my opinion. So I just wish there was some way we could fight this, because this, again, Revere is not the same as every other city in this state. Tom, I know this, your hands are tied as well, to an extent, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to go on record as well, saying I could not be more opposed to this in every sense. We adopted an ADU ordinance a few years back, correct? It was much more prohibitive. It had to be owner-occupied, single families, things like that. I wasn't 100% on board with that, but it was much better than this is. This is just so heavy-handed, that this is just being, really just shoved down our throats with, with saying that there's nothing that we can do about it. I would strongly be in favor of trying to explore ways to challenge this. I know that the MBTA community's law had, you know, had sanctions there if you didn't go along with it, with grant money being withheld and things like that, and still, there were some communities that did not go along with it and challenged it. This doesn't have that attached to it, it doesn't have those sanctions attached to it, so I would seriously like us to try to consider challenging this. You said that this would not just apply to single-family homes, would this apply to town? Would this apply to townhomes? Even a townhome could have an ADU?
Theoretically, yes, but they would need to conform with dimensional and design standards of our zoning ordinance as well.
And just to follow up on that conservation and in flood zones and things like that, I could maybe understand that situation if we're talking about a separate structure being built or added on or something like that to a main structure. But if you have a single-family home or a two-family home that has a finished basement, per se, and you want to turn that finished basement into an ADU in order to collect the rent, and you happen to be in a flood zone, if that's already a finished basement, you, there would be nothing stopping you from doing that, correct? As long as you were, as long as you adhere to the building code?
And building code would prohibit it because it's below the, I mean, I'm assuming in this case, it would be below the floodplain and below the base flood elevation.
Even if it was already finished space?
But as a dwelling unit for people to live in, it would be prohibited per the code. So that, I can pretty definitively say, I can't speak more generally of, of all projects within the floodplain.
Okay. And I, and when this was pitched to us originally, it was definitely pitched to us in a way that this was for owner occupants so that if it was an elderly person or a senior citizen, it would be a way to help them stay in their home because they would be able to maybe have this ADU unit without having to go through the expense of formally converting the property into a legal two-family home. And it might, that, that extra income might help them stay in their home longer and things like that. So I think that premise was reasonable and, and made some common sense there. This just doesn't, once again, I don't see any common sense or reasonableness to this at all. And I would be in favor in trying to explore a way that we challenge this as it's too heavy-handed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Any other Counselors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you.
Tom, just a few questions. I, I remember just, I don't know, five or six years ago, we were going around making everyone rip out their in-law apartments. So they had to remove all their, down in their basements. I get everyone's concerns. Are there any penalties if we don't go for this? If, if we just say, we're, we're not going to adopt this? And are the, is the state throwing any penalties at us? Are they, are they threatening anything?
So I think the penalties would be more if a, an applicant was denied the right to, to build an ADU on their property. We would potentially be liable for, I guess, civil action or would, would be very busy in land court. I, I would assume the city solicitor's office would spend a lot of time working on such concerns. And I'm, I'm sure many communities are going to be going through the same issue, but it's not unlike many other things that are currently protected by the Dover Amendment in 48A. And once that protection is, is in there, it can be a very costly legal battle to fight against applicants that are, by the law, entitled to something that 48A would state they are as, as a Dover Amendment exception.
Okay. So, I, I mean, the, the, the one way to do this is, is for us really to, to work our legislators at the State House. They're kind of the, the ones that can make amendments to this, right?
Yes, I, I think they would have to create, yeah. It would, it would be a complicated process, but I think that would be your best bet.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other Counselors?
I just have one more question. Mr. Skrowski, so they still have to meet building code. So I, I know Counselor Silvestri said that we had made people rip out their in-law apartments. You still need two means of egress. The windows have to be a certain size for firefighters to get through. That, all those codes would still be in place.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Okay, this will be referred to zoning.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called as ordered on a loan order for water system improvements and MWRA-led replacement project in the amount of $1,875,000.
Can we have proponents? Mr. Viskey.
Good evening, everybody. Richard Viskey, CFO, 281 Broadway. I'm here in support of this loan order. This important loan order will help the city remove lead services throughout the entire city. It's a program that's run through the MWRA. It is a zero-interest loan with up to 25% of it becoming forgivable on eligible projects within the lead service replacement. I'll defer to the water system department with the details of it. But zero-interest loan with up to 25% forgiveness is something I strongly support. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Anthony Glizia, Assistant Superintendent, 319 Charger Street. Just wanted to reiterate the work that we completed last year to remove as much lead as possible from the city of Revere. And our goal to be lead-free, we started with 1,159 unknown services. We've gotten that number down to 578. We also started with 743 lead services, and we've gotten that number down to 445. Where it's our mission to do this as quickly as possible to get the lead out of the city and minimize the impact to the roads, the trenches that we have to do. We put a lot of resources to our DPW, our, our man-hours that we used last year to meet these deadlines. And this grant would really help us expedite this process and get all the lead out of the city.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Proponents? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing none? City Counselors? Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was one of those houses. My house was built night, 1840, 64, I'm sorry. And I was one of those houses that had lead in their, lead leaders in their water. And they did come and take it out. It was a long process because I live up on a hill, but they did a great job. And I think that I feel safe now, I think, drinking the water. So I think this is great. It's a great program, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Glizia. Thank you. The project you're working on now, is this the lead from the shut-off out to the street? It's not into private homes, or?
Yeah, no interior plumbing. It concerns from the main to the curb stop. And then the curb stop as well to the meter.
To the meter. So now, and this is no cost to the residents?
Yes, if we come across a lead line, it'll be fully replaced at no cost to the homeowner or resident.
Okay. What happens if, like, you run into landscaping? It's, it's under stairs. You have to take a wall down on private property. What happens with that?
It's a good question. The contractors that we've used thus far and when we put this out to bid, the, the intention is that everything's restored to the way that they found it.
And no cost to the homeowner?
No cost to the homeowner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gino Oswayah.
Thank you, Mr. President. You slashed both our names together. I just want to say thank you. You've done an amazing job over the last year changing all the pipes and stuff. It, it's, it's really, it's beneficial to every, all the residents of the city of Revere. And the fact that our drinking water is actually drinkable is amazing because a lot of cities can't say that. So thank you for all the work you, the MWRA, and our head, Chris Charmella, has done for the city. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Okay. Thank you.
Hi, we're certain proponents, right?
We're actually on City Counselors.
Oh, snap. Okay. Sorry, I slipped away for the bathroom real quick and then came back. Well, anyways, Juan Hondo, 70 Low Street. I'm here to be in support of this. You know, fortunately, I have family members that work at the MWD area, so I won't be speaking from, from the council seat, but just in support. And really grateful to the DPW, the MWRA, for all the work that they do. And I hope this passes.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, we have two separate roll calls. Madam Clerk?
First is for the resolution. Shall the city council approve a resolution relative to the MWRA-led replacement project? Counselor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Green Oswayah?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Harramio is recorded as recused. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the MWRA resolution has been approved. And shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $1,875,000 for the MWRA-led replacement project? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Green Oswayah?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, and, I'm sorry, Counselor Harramio is recused. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna? Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number seven. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance relative to improving public health and accessibility to healthcare products in the city of Revere.
Any proponents? Proponents? Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Jalea Figueroa from Vane Street. I'm a junior at Revere High School, and I'm here to talk about something that affects half our population but is often overlooked, menstruation. Specifically, I want to address my menstrual products should be made available in all public buildings in Revere and ask that you please vote yes on the ordinance relative to improving public health and accessibility to healthcare products in the city of Revere. In my hand, I have a dozen letters from high school students who wrote letters to the city council believing in this ordinance and want it desperately approved. Access to menstrual products is a basic necessity that is often a luxury for many women in our community. Most of the time, that need for menstrual products can come at unexpected times, whether it be during the school day, during a visit to City Hall, or the library. Without easy access to pads or tampons, it can cause significant stress and discomfort. In fact, research shows that one in five students have missed school because they didn't have access to menstrual products. This is something that should not happen in our community. By making these products available in public buildings like our libraries and recreational centers, we should ensure that no one would have to face the embarrassment or challenges that come with being unprepared. It's not just about convenience. It's about equality. Again, access to these products is a basic necessity that currently feels like a luxury some of us either cannot afford or have trouble accessing at the most crucial times. Moreover, making menstrual products accessible in public spaces would show that our city values the health and dignity of all its residents. It's an easy step to take that would make a big difference in the lives of so many people. Thank you for your time. Please vote yes on this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Name and record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamila Figueroa, and I'm a 7th grader at GMS. I would like to express my appreciation for the availability of menstrual products in our schools. However, I believe we need to improve the distribution of these products. Today, I want to talk about why menstrual products should be made available in all public buildings in Revere and ask that you please vote yes on the ordinance relative to improving public health and accessibility to healthcare products in the city of Revere. Not too long ago, I was in the library with a couple of my peers when one of them asked if we had a pad available, which none of us did. And the bathroom didn't have any either. This is an example of what many of us encounter on a daily basis. Providing these products in public spaces is a simple but powerful way to demonstrate respect for our health and well-being. It's a small investment in, that can have a significant impact on both comfort and confidence for any woman. Let's work together to ensure that menstrual products are as accessible as any other necessity. Because when everyone has the resources they need, we all move forward stronger, healthier, and more united. Thank you for your time. Please vote yes on this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Proponents? Closing that side. Any opponents? Okay, closing that side. City Counselors? Counselor Green Oswayah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really excited to have collaborated with my fellow counselor, Juan Harramillo, on this because, as these girls said, it makes me really happy that this is something that they want. And the key word of what they said today was necessity. And for women and for young girls, it is a necessity. And I'm really hoping that fellow counselors will vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Harramio.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I want to, again, thank Councilwoman Green Oswayah for her support of this motion. But most importantly, to the two amazing young ladies that just spoke on the motion. I think that, you know, I've spoken a little bit about some real public health needs that we all have that is accessible to everyone, every single building, no matter where you go in this country and in this city. And this is a big glaring gap that we've had for generations here. And, you know, I, this came out of an idea from conversations with young women in the, in the, in a civics class at the Revere High School who, who, you know, wanted to expand this. And I want to acknowledge that the Revere Public School already does this, but that our public buildings that are run by the city of Revere, not the public schools, don't do this yet. And so in addition to this being a really, a need in the public health space, this has been served, as you see, as an opportunity to uplift the voices of our young leaders here in the city. So really proud of them for coming to speak in support of this today. And I hope that the rest of my colleagues will join me in voting in support of this once the time is, is right. And I also want to, sorry, one last thing, want to make one clarification. You know, we note here that the mayor, we're given, we're asking the mayor to work with the school department and the city essentially to make sure that things are, you know, in his capacity as, as the school committee chair, make sure that things are copatetic between the school district and the city, and make sure that, you know, we have a, a kind of, a unity strategy around providing these products, which, again, I want to acknowledge already happens in the schools, but we want to expand to places like the library, like Ms. Figueroa just mentioned.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with this, too. I think it's a wonderful way for women to get access to what they need. The only thing that I feel is, I just wouldn't want it to be abused. Like, for instance, if you put them in the school bathrooms, and I don't know if they, I know you said they're in the high school, but if they're in the, you know, the, the, the women's bathroom, I just don't want someone to pick it up and open it up and throw it, throw it on the floor or something. I want it to be used. So that's my biggest concern, is I hope it can be mandated so it can be put in places where women can go in, like the nurse's office or an administrator's office or teachers', a woman teacher's classroom or somewhere where they won't be abused. And that's my only concern about them being abused, just people playing with them and, and that's it. And thank you for coming up. You guys were amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other city counselors? Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Girls, very well-spoken. Excellent job.
Excellent job. Thank you for coming up. I'm in full support of this. I do have to mention that this may, this is going to have a cost to the city. And depending on how many public buildings we actually put this in, we may be looking at a bill over $5,000. That doesn't concern me, but procedurally, we need to send this to have a financial impact statement done before we can final vote on this. That's by ordinance, unfortunately, so. I don't know if it needs to go to Ways and Means or if we can get the financial impact statement and have it be part of the Presentation and Legislative Affairs. Maybe the madam clerk would know more about that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Any other councilors? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you.
Ladies, great job. As a dad of two girls, and this is a necessity that should be and should already be happening. It's very brave of you to come up here and speak on this, and I'm excited you did so. I, like I said, I couldn't imagine going into the men's room and not being able to use toiletries or toilet paper. So I don't think that's something that females should be looking into, and kudos on you bringing this up. Thank you.
This will be going to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number eight. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Edwin Bala, 48 Derby Road, Revere, Mass., requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to raise the existing nonconforming structure and construct a new four-story mixed-use building within the same footprint, consisting of a two-story restaurant on the ground and second floors, and two residential units on the third and fourth floors, one apartment per floor, at 6364 Revere Beach Boulevard.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Florian Luca of 45 Malcolm Road, Boston, and I'm the architect on the project. And I'll be speaking on behalf of my client. Half the job has already been done. As has been said, the address of this project is 6364 Revere Beach Boulevard, AKA Nix Place, which most of you probably are familiar. I'm sure you are. And what we have here, we have a lot that's just under 1,200 square feet, and most of it being occupied by the existing building, which has seen better days. And so we are proposing of taking it all down and rebuilding, as said, a four-story building, two stories of restaurant, and two story of one bedroom each. The restaurant will have an entrance and a back-of-house kitchen on the first floor, and a seating dining area of about 35 patrons on the second floor. The area is zone RC2, and this is where the problem starts. Because the RC2, as you may be aware, it requires a minimum of 25,000 square feet lot. And again, we only have under 1,200, which makes it very hard for, impossible for us to meet the setback requirements, the FAR, and the parking. So that's why we came to request a relief from those requirements from the council. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Anyone else in favor? Any opponents? Woo! Name and address.
Mike Tucker, 9 Ellis and Street, Revere. I, I'm not, I don't, I have to come up as a proponent because you don't have a question area. They're stating that they clarified now, because it's not in their documents. It's only going to be one-bedroom units on each floor. Am I correct?
Correct.
With zero parking. Well, there's 10 parkings, there's zero parking, even for the restaurant. The restaurant would require, I believe, they're asking for 40 seats, according, if you get the count, but there are no parking at all. I have a problem with the footprint because they're saying that the existing building does not take up that whole footprint. They have parking on there now. They did clarify that they are only going to have two one-bedrooms, so I'm not really an opponent, but I just want the questions. They said 35 tables, but in the application, I believe, it counts for 40. So if they can clarify that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, so the lot is just, yes, right now, there's a lot of empty lot around the building, but that is not our client's. So the actual lot is just 1,159 square feet, which is a little bit at the back corner that is not occupied by the building. Everything else is the building itself. So there's that. So there is no parking available. Whatever is seen right on the street, it's the other property. I said 35 patrons, not tables. So that's the total for patrons plus the staff. So that gets us to about 40 persons' occupancy, which calculates about 10 parking spaces required for the restaurant. And for the two one-bedroom apartments, one and a half parking spaces per unit. That makes it three. So that's the total, and the total comes up to 13. So that's the...
Mr. Tucker, does that answer your questions?
The small parcel on the back?
It's not the client's, no.
It's not the client's?
No, it's not the client's.
So what will happen with that piece of parcel?
This is my client's parcel, right here.
Okay, but what is going to happen on the side? Because aren't you occupying that now?
It's somebody else's.
But Nick doesn't use that parcel?
Yeah, I use it.
Yeah, I use it now.
Yes. Okay, so what's going to happen with that parcel? Okay.
Yeah.
What was the answer to that question?
That parcel remains. That small parcel's going to remain.
Well, it's not that small. It's a huge parcel around it. It's just, yeah.
Being used now by Nick.
Well, I guess the free-for-all, I know.
Okay. And that they're... Okay. Any other opponents? Opponents? Closing that side. City councilors? Yep. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So how many seats do you have right now? 24. And you want to go up 44?
35.
35, okay, so you want to go up 10. Okay, and parking on the street, you're not, you are using that lot. I know you are. He's right about that, but before you weren't, when that lot was not available and there was still a building up there, you were using street parking. Am I right? Okay. Well, the other thing, too, is it's very disappointing that you don't have, you're the architect, you don't have a rendering of what you're going to do.
We do. We submitted...
Oh, you do? Oh, did I miss it? Okay, I must have missed it. I'm sorry. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so what is your elevation? That's a good question.
The elevation?
Are you going? Total height? 52 feet. Okay. Yes, I missed it. I missed it. Okay. Do you have, is that an elevator?
The elevator is inside, that's a stair.
Okay, all right. So right now, you have 25 seating. You want to add 10 more, and then you want to add two bedrooms, and you have no parking.
Yes.
So everything will be on the street. Okay. Thank you very much.
The 35 unit, the 35, sorry if I may.
Go ahead.
The 35 seating, it's mandated by the code. It's based on the square footage of the place, so that's why we...
I mean, we're always looking for mixed use in the city. That's, I mean, that's why we selected Hymn, Suffolk Downs, to come in, and we're always looking for mixed use. But parking's a problem, so. And I think this is going to be referred to what Legislative Affairs is zoning. Zoning? Okay, so I'll wait until the committee. Thank you very much.
And I'll have a sandwich for you next.
Great, thank you very much.
Just for clarification, I had to come up as an opponent because there's no comment section. I am not opposed to what he's saying now. But I will go to the meeting, and I'll go to the subcommittee and state my case.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Okay, so any other opponents? Any other city councilors? Counselor Agenzio?
So the restaurant now, Nix, they don't have any parking for the restaurant people now, right?
No, we don't.
We don't. And now, as far as the two bedrooms, I'm not familiar with parking along Revere Beach Boulevard. Is that restricted at night? Any way for residents to park on it?
It is on Ocean Ave.
On Ocean Ave?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So your people that use these two apartments would pack on Ocean Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, love Nix.
Thank you.
But I have to discuss this building. I'm disappointed I didn't get some kind of renderings on the individual floors of how the layouts are going to be. So I'd like to see that when it comes to committee.
Yes, we will, yeah.
I'd like to see what's going to go below grade from the Boulevard down to Ocean Ave. What is going to be down there?
It's going to be a basement for storage and for the restaurant.
Storage for Nix?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no room for any parking back there?
No, it's not. And the footprint is so small, we just can't get down. Without stack parking, there's no way that would went tonight, and an elevator, so no.
But I'd like to see inside renderings on the layout of the floors.
I agree, yeah.
Each floor, all the way down.
Yes.
Okay.
We are restricted a little bit, I have to say, by the requirements of this mission. Even so, we did put out a bit more than I thought we were allowed. So that's kind of a, I was kind of straitjacketed on that. Not to mention the fact that we weren't really sure if this is going to have any traction, so it's only so much money the client wants to spend, or I want him to spend on this. But yes, to your point, yes.
Please do that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I love Nix.
Thank you.
We order from there once a week. My question is, during, say this does pass, and you get to build, what you want to build, what's going to happen? Are you closing down during the process?
Yes, we will, to come back even better.
Okay, you will be closing down, though, for a while.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
No, I'll deliver. I'll deliver privately, yeah.
Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. Maybe you can, maybe you can't. So a lot of times, when we get into these situations of parking restrictions and whatnot, we ask the developer if they would agree to end the lease, not have someone who's moving in have no vehicle. So put that in your lease, that the person who moves in has, doesn't have a vehicle, unless you were planning on having it for an employee or yourself.
Actually, it's going to be for family purpose use, for my parents or for my kids, who are going to graduate now and have an apartment to leave.
I understand.
They're born here, and they're raised here.
I think about, I would think about it if you would, maybe putting that into the deal, whereas we say, you know, we just won't allow cars, and you have the trains right there and whatnot, and that might help some of the councilors get over the parking concerns.
Of course.
Just a thought.
No, absolutely, yes.
Okay, good luck, thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you. To your point, we could just add this to Title 10 so they wouldn't get resident stickers. I don't like the idea of telling them they have to put it into, put this as part of a lease, that they can't have a vehicle. If someone wants a vehicle and they decide to use a parking lot to store their vehicle, that's one thing, but, you know, Title 10 exists for, you know, we can allow one sticker, no stickers, or whatever it is. So personally, no offense, Mr. President, but I would say just add this to Title 10 and limit it the way that we want to limit it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This will be referred to zoning.
Calendar item number nine. Hearing called is ordered on the application of Nicholas Dare, 375 Broadway, Revere, Mass., requesting a special permit from the Revere City Council to enable the appellant to expand an existing nonconforming use and structure for the conversion of a five-unit structure to a six-unit structure at 30 Campbell Ave.
Petitioner?
Nick Dare, 375 Broadway. Thank you very much, councilmembers. I'm here tonight to ask for a special permit to convert the five-unit building that I just purchased to a six. I will be fairly brief because it will be going to committee. However, I'll be happy to dive in as deep and thorough as you guys would like. So in August of 2024, I purchased the existing five-unit, very distressed building. And I have here. Since then, my goal was to first tackle the exterior. I had the asbestos abated. I had the windows removed, took down the dilapidated porch, did new vinyl, and now is the time to tackle the interior. And when, my goal is to bring it all up to code, and by doing so, I'd like to add a two-bedroom apartment to the unfinished top floor. The existing structure would not change. What you see now is what you will get. The footprint won't change, the exterior won't change, the height will not change. What will change is the fire code within the building. By doing this changing use, it will activate all code upgrades. I'd be bringing a sprinkler system, central fire alarm system, proper egresses, and really bringing it all up to code, which will make it a safer place for the existing tenants, future tenants, first responders, and also help attract a much stronger clientele. I live in the city, I work in the city, I take pride in the real estate I own. And in its current condition, I'm not very proud of it. I also have some renderings. We had Councilman Novoselsky and I hosted a neighborhood meeting. It was all very positive feedback. They were thrilled to know that I'd also be adding four additional parking. The main concern in this neighborhood is the parking. So again, I'll show you a picture. This is a rendering of the two-bedroom apartment. And again, the exterior will not be changing. The height will not be changing. The dormers are already in place. It'll be a beautiful 720-square-foot apartment. And in doing so, I will also be adding four parking, which was really appeasing to the neighborhood. So it'll be a one-to-one ratio, six apartments, six parking spaces. And then, just to give you a visual where the parking will be added. Oh, all right. A great student. And then this is where the parking will be going. So as you can see, it's already paved to begin with. I'll just be extending the paving back, which will allow for those four additional spaces. So there is my project, my proposal, and I know this will be going in the subcommittee, but I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Any other proponents? Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor of this project? Name and address, please.
My name's Ennio Palacios. I live in One Overlook. Got a nice neighbor, and he did a good job.[1693.33] And he did a good job. I'm very happy. I have no problem with, I'm happy with parking space. I'm very happy with him, because my house go more valid.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Any other proponents? O- Proponents?
No proponents.
No. Any other proponents? We'll close that side. Opponents? Please come up. Name and address, please, for the record. You are against.
My, I have a house on Charles Ave, 17 Charles Ave. Name's Andrea Lentz. The reason why I'm here is that it sounds good, but the parking around there is a nightmare. And a matter of fact, the police were there yesterday, and they have to keep on coming because they, there's no place for parking. And they keep on blocking. There was a car in my driveway. And the guy's going irate and screaming and swearing and saying, "I'll do whatever I want." So, the police had to come and, you know, have him remove it. He almost hit the police. It was just, this is like an ongoing thing. They're always blocking my driveway. So, how is that benefit? And because you put in another apartment, so now we're up to six. Have you been down Overlook in Charles Ave?
Yes. I know where we're talking about.
You see, that's a nightmare with the roads.
It's tight down there, yeah.
And things that were allowed, I don't even know how it got passed. But people don't use their driveways and they're parking on the street. I try, I always use my driveway to ease it up.
Right.
It's beyond, and then, I'm just saying, what about gas? You're talking about massive cars, and there are, no one on Charles Ave can even park. They have Albert. Albert, they're on both sides. So, I don't know when it was. I've been there since I was a little girl. They took away the one side. Worst thing they ever did, they said that they can't get up there because of the fire department. Did you try and get up Albert? You can't get up there either. You know what I mean? Like, I barely get my car through going up Albert Ave. They're on both sides. So, I had to come down here and voice my opinion, because the parking is incredible. People next door to me, I guess it was a parking man, no one moved their cars, and he shovels and he throws it all in the street. So, it's a complete ice mound, and then, now they're parking in front of my driveway because no one can park. It's a nightmare. That's all I can say. It's a nightmare there.
Thank you.
You know, so, picture, picture more cars. Picture more people coming to visit. I mean, it's not just the people that are living there. More and more cars flying up and down the street. It's really bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
Michael Tucker, 9 Ellerton Street. Again, I have to get up as an opponent, but I am in favor of it, because they answered the question. They're adding four parking spaces that aren't there right now. I hope everyone realizes that.
Yes.
They're adding four parking spaces. So, I am in full support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Consular Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just gonna say, I've had a few conversations with Nick over the last week or so. I think this is a nice plan. I like the four spots, the idea of adding the four spots out front. I'm not sure if that's known, but that, a lot of people seem to be confused by that. But he is adding four parking spots in back of the residence. But he's done great work on Broadway. I know he takes a lot of pride in the city, like he said, so I don't see a problem with this project. I think it's a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consulars? Consular Agenzio?
I have a question for Mr. Dare. How many spots currently exist there, off-street parking?
Currently, it's two. So, in its current condition, it's actually a more burden to the neighborhood, being a five-to-two ratio, part of apartments of two spaces, versus what it would be, six-to-six, one-to-one.
Six, okay.
So, my goal now, I mean, right now, there are two vacant units. That's kind of why I'm really going forward with it now. But if I were to rent the existing units, it would be a burden to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Consular McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're always, you know, talking about no parking. People are coming up here, they're developing, and they're always asking for no parking. You know? Mr. Dare has six parking spaces he's putting in. I just think it's a great thing. I know you're talking about no parking, but he's putting six spaces in this. If you have a problem with people parking in front of your driveway, you can call the traffic, you can come up to the traffic commission, you can put a request in and have a sign. And I don't know if a sign would help, but no park, well, we'll put it back up, but no parking near the driveway. So, that might relieve your problem with parking.
I just don't see how it's gonna benefit.
Well, you can't talk from your, that you have to come up and talk. You can't talk from your chair.
I just don't see how it's gonna benefit when each apartment, the people next door, there's like 30 of them living there. Across the street, there's 30 people.
We're talking about him, though.
I know, and I'm talking about parking.
Because we have problems all over the city. And we have problems with parking all over the city. I live on Winter Ave, I don't have a driveway. All right? So, I have, so, it's by chance tonight, if I get a parking space in front of my house, I'll probably have to park down the street. Parking is crazy in the city of Revere. But he's willing to give six parking spaces. So, that eliminates, I mean, yes, you could talk about the guy across the street, but we're talking about him now. And he's given, he's given that house six parking spaces, which doesn't exist right now. So, that's a win. That's a win for the city. Because we have developers coming up here all the time, asking, "Well, can, we're gonna put this development up, but we don't really have any place." I mean, we just had it. No parking. So, I think this is a win. Thank you.
I mean, it sounds like a nice project. I'm just thinking of, like, each apartment, how many cars are they gonna have? And guess? You know what I mean? Like, you're not talking about, like, one car. You're talking about many cars.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but right now, he has two parking spaces. So, they're, I don't know, what do you have, five apartments in there? So, those people are parking, two cars are parking in those two spaces, and then, the rest of the five units are parking on the street. So, he's eliminating, he's putting four parking spaces more in there for six units. So, I just think it's a win-win. Yes, maybe you'll have a visitor come in and they'll have to park on the street, but it's a win-win. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Hermio?
If one of my colleagues on the council could help me, is there any way to restrict on-street parking for this particular building? So, if they live there, they already have the one-to-one? Is that, is that something that can happen? Is that something the developer would be amenable to? Just to restrict the on-street parking to a visitor? I mean, we can have a further conversation in committee, but I guess that might help solve the residence problem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I've been dealing with Nick, you know, since the beginning. I was thinking of even doing this, and I got phone calls from Charles Ave. And, you know, Charles, the people on Charles Ave, or the people that come to visit Charles Ave, they're coming to visit people on Charles Ave. They're not coming from Campbell Ave to park on Charles, because you can't park on Charles. It's one-sided parking. And, excuse me?
They come from Charles.
Well, please, let me, we let you talk. Let me speak, please. And I didn't interrupt you. And when people shovel snow, it's people that live on the street that are doing the shoveling, not the people on Campbell Ave coming down to park there. Charles is a very, very small street. Campbell Ave is a larger street. And with all due respect to Consular Hermio, you can't restrict parking on a public street for one house. You can't do it. And by adding the four spaces, that is enough to make it doable and have a nice building. He's already made the building nice. He's gonna redo the, regrade the ground, put new walls up, new concrete walls, new retaining walls, new fencing all around, and it's gonna look nice. The people that lived there before were very nice people, never had a problem with them. And I don't think we're gonna have a problem anywhere with this particular space. The situation with other houses and what they do, we can't control that. We can't control 30 people living in one apartment house in another house someplace else. We're just talking about 30 Campbell Avenue, bottom line. So, I will be in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Garino Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Consular Novoselfski, as well as Consular McKenna. Most of the buildings that are coming up now, or apartments that are coming up now to be built, have no parking. Nick is giving us, Mr. Dare has given us, four extra spots, which will make it a one-to-one ratio. And I think it is, it's going to be beneficial for the neighborhood. It won't be a detriment, because it'll take away the two cars that are actually being parked in the middle of the street right now. So, they will have somewhere to park in the driveway, since he's adding the four extra spots. So, I'm in favor of this as well.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the resident. Ma'am, I know you got some pushback tonight, but if someone's blocking your driveway, call the police. And if, and if they don't help you, I will. So, you can call me. I'll give you my number afterwards, because if someone blocked my driveway, I'd be calling the cops. So, if they're not, if they're not coming out there, I'm happy to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Any other Consulars? It's referred to zoning.
Calendar item number 10. Hearing called as ordered on the application of Gibson Point Owner LLC, Carof Redgate, 265 Franklin Street, Boston, requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for above-ground storage of 5,005 gallons of gasoline and 358.2 gallons of oil to be contained within 199 vehicles to be parked in a parking garage of a residential development at 1 Gibson Way, Revere.
Petitioners? Is anyone here? From proponents? Any proponents?
Hi, I'm Austin Smith of Coderick Consultants, 132 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. And I'm here on behalf of the appellant, which is the building owner. And I am serving as a fire protection engineer and consultant. So, we submitted the application to the city, and prior to doing so, we had submitted to the fire department, corresponding to Deputy Chief Paul Cheever, for his review and approval for the application, which we were able to obtain. One point of clarification I'd like to add is that all the flammable combustible liquids that are stored within the structure are solely on Level 1, and within the vehicles themselves is just motor oil and gasoline. And two, there are no other storage locations within the building itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Anyone in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Closing that side. City Consulars? Consular Zambudo.
I don't know why these still come before us, but they do. And it shouldn't be here. But I'm certainly in favor of granting this license.
Thank you, Consular. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I know the gentleman in this said it, but I do want to make clear that this is for vehicles parked in the building. This isn't to store gasoline and oil. These are the vehicles that will be moving into this facility. That's what the gallons of gas and oil are. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you. Okay, we can roll call the vote. Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve a Chapter 148 license for the purposes stated to be executed at 1 Gibson Way? Consular Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Hermio?
No.
No. Consular Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Consular McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes. Consular Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Consul President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the Chapter 148 license has been granted. Calendar item number 11. Hearing called as ordered on the application of Revere Owner LLC, 646 Ocean Ave, requesting a Chapter 148 license from the Revere City Council for the above-ground storage of 237 gallons of diesel fuel to be contained within an emergency generator and 4,840 gallons of gasoline contained within 242 vehicles to be parked in a two-level parking garage within a mixed-use development at 646 Ocean Ave.
Anyone here from petition? Any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing none? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone against? Hearing none? City Consulars?
Mr. President?
Consular Novoselfski.
Mr. President, I know the developers are not here, and I don't know why, but this is just like 1 Gibson. It's the same situation, just the storage of the new cars and the new building that's going up. So, I say we move on it and approve it.
Consular Garino Swaya.
Just a quick question. Is it all outside parking? Well, then, it's not the same as the other one. Because the other one is all outside.
I don't, you only need a 140. Excuse me, Mr. President. Through you to the council. You need a 148 for underground parking. So, the other one had to have some underground parking on it. Under the building. Right. That's right. They do have a parking lot. Yours, Gibson, does have a large parking lot. This does not. But it's all under the building, so you need the 148.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Janino?
Two different categories here. The last one we had had 199 vehicles, 199, just say 200, with 5,005 gallons. We have 237 over here with 4,800 gallons. What's the difference here? Do you know? If it's, if it's gas stored in a vehicle, would it be the same? And just, the 237 times 20? There's no oil left either.
We're looking that up, Consular.
For example, 1 Gibson Way, if the City Council takes a look at the application, maximum quantity calculated based on maximum number of cars, 305 at 1.8 gallons of oil, per 25 gallons of gasoline per car, and 1.8 gallons of oil per 55 gallons of gasoline per van, comes out to 305 cars, times 25 gallons of gas per car, plus two vans, times 55 gallons of gas per van. That gives you 7,007.35 gallons of gas. There was no calculation provided on the application for the 646 Ocean.
We table that one until the marshalling?
Mr. President, with all due respect, you know, the fire department approved this. You know, so they know what's going on down there. And everybody does their calculations differently, with the different number of vehicles, different kinds of vehicles. And, you know, this, to me, this is a no-brainer. Just approve it. Let them park their cars underneath the building.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Zambudo.
Again, it makes the case that they shouldn't be before us. The fire department approves them, they should just, they should have a license. I wish we could change, change the ordinance so that would happen. Maybe.
Maybe we look into that, Consular.
Maybe we can get together and do that, yeah. Great.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Hermio?
Mr. President, I don't know how procedurally this works, but on Agenda Item Number 10 here, I'd just like to be recorded in the affirmative.
Thank you. Any other Consulars?
Move the question.
Okay. Let me see. Yes. Please roll call. Please roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a Chapter 148 license for the purposes stated to be executed at 646 Ocean Avenue? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The Chapter 148 license has been granted. Calendar item number 12. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install underground facilities on Endicott Ave, Revere, Mass, to include the installation of underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith.
Name and address for the record, please.
Petrajcheka, 170 Metford Street in Malden. Coming to represent National Grid. National Grid plans to install underground conduit for secondary cables from the riser installed on Pole 157 to traffic control enclosure located on the sidewalk of Endicott Ave in Revere.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have already talked to him. I can't say...what's your first name?
Petrajch.
Okay. And it seems like it's like 65 feet?
Yes.
Okay. And that's not a lot. I know where it's right in front of Lady Lauds and that intersection, and they're doing work there now. So I approve of that, but I just want to say to you, because you're not going to come here easy. I'm sorry. I'm going to be kind. I'm going to be kind. But I'm going to approve this tonight. I'm going to say yes to this, but I just want you to know that I've called National Grid for the last four months. We have five lights out, and one of them, President Silvestri and I put in for Luigi's in front of the train station, which has not been put in yet. There's three lights...well, five lights that are not lit on Winthropakeway. Two poles are missing, and DCR has already done the conduit for it a month ago, and it's National Grid's turn to come in and put the poles back up and do that lighting, because that's a curve. And if you...it's very, very dark. Someone's going to hit the wall.
Can I get an address?
Yeah, I don't have an address. It's Winthropakeway. I have one pole, 77, that I know. It's 785 Winthropave.
Winthropave?
Yes. That's five...I have like five or six poles, and I've been calling Tammy, National Grid, for the last four months, and nothing's been done.
Yeah. I will have to bring that up with them, because I have no idea what's going on there. So I'm going to try to bring this up, and hopefully we can have something.
And these...and the lights that are out are very crucial, you know, because they're crosswalks to...from the train station across the street to Luigi's. The other one's intersection from Winthropave and Crescent Ave. That's a big one. And Winthropakeway is, I mean, it's crucial because it's a curve. So if the lights are out and the cars don't know where they're going, they're going to hit the wall, or they're going to knock down the two poles that they haven't put up yet. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counsel McKenna. Any other counselors? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you can roll call the members.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by National Grid for Endicott Avenue? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hermio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. The petition of National Grid for Endicott Ave has been approved. Calendar item number 13. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install a pole across from 55 Walnut Ave, beginning at a point approximately 134 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Shirley Ave and Walnut Ave, and continuing approximately 17 feet in an easterly direction.
Petitioner.
So National Grid, in this case, is petitioning to install a new secondary pole, which would be labeled Pole 679-84, to relocate a previously existing antenna attachment at Pole 679 Walnut Ave.
Thank you. Proponents? Any proponents? Hearing none? Any opponents? Opponents? Anyone against? Closing that side. City councilors?
Mr. President.
Counsel Nowosowski.
Mr. President, this is the first I've ever heard of this. Had no clue they were doing it. And I have an issue of where they want to put it, why they want to put it, and I think we ought to table it and have them meet me sometime between now and the next meeting and explain to me exactly what's going on, because I'm not happy with this at all.
Thank you, counselor.
That is okay with me. I can try and meet with you at some point, whenever we're available.
Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know I was going to have something to say about adding a pole, but when you talk about a secondary pole, is that...is this a...is the first pole one that's damaged or leaning in any way? Is this a quick fix?
This isn't anything regarding that. So the Pole 679 previously used to have an antenna on it, because a new building came in front of it. We put transformers on it in order to feed the new building that was...so the antenna was moved, and they're trying to put the pole there in order to place the antenna that was previously existing in the other pole. That's basically what's going on.
So it's nothing like the instance on Wilson Street a couple weeks back when the pole was leaning or anything like that?
No, that's nothing regarding that. No.
And you can meet with the ward counselor to discuss this?
I can try to meet with him. I don't know. I'm going to have to get a phone number for that, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you for the leeway. Is this a 5G antenna?
I'm not sure. I think it was a Wi-Fi antenna, but I should talk with somebody.
So we do have an ordinance that no 5Gs come into the city? So...
No idea. This was a previously existing pole. This was a previously existing antenna, so I am not sure how it was. It was...used to be, according to Google Maps, it was in 2019 there, so I don't know.
Okay. So Counselor Nowosowski can discuss that with you. I'd really like to know if that's a 5G or not. Thank you.
So is it the will of the council that we want to hold this? Table it? Get your information, counselor, and we'll proceed as...
Motion to table.
Motion to table?
Calendar item number 14. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 10 feet of 2-4 inch conduit from existing pole 2274-0 to private property to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 130 Hitchborne Street.
Petitioner.
Yes. So National Grid is petitioning to install approximately 10 feet of 2x4 inch conduit from existing pole 2274-0 to private property to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 130 Highborn Street in Revere.
Hitchborne. Thank you. Counsel Nowosowski.
Thank you, Ms. President. Again, I was never notified of this. This is the first I've ever heard of this happening. So I ask this to be tabled also.
Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the ward counselor, is this courtesy as National...does National Grid usually reach out beforehand?
Through you, Mr. President. At times, they do. I've had meetings with other engineers that have come up, you know, and I've met beforehand and let me know what's going on.
Because I think they should. I think that's a good thing. And if that's something that's lapsed the last couple of weeks or months, then I was going to say that's something we should probably look into with that, with the lack of communication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to table?
Calendar item number 15. Hearing called as ordered on a petition filed by National Grid to install approximately 10 feet of 1-3 inch underground conduit from existing pole 3919-0 to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 73 Gage Ave.
Petitioner.
National Grid is petitioning to install about 10 feet of 1x3 inch conduit from existing pole 3919-0 to private property to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 73 Gage Avenue in Revere.
Thank you. Do you have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing none. We'll close that side. Opponents? Anyone against? Sir, can you come up and state your name and address for the record? Could you press the button, sir? Thank you.
Shaw Oakley, January 250, Lantern Road, apartment number 34. My question will be from National Grid. How deep they going to go and how much radiation will be creating to go into the property? Whether it is overhead or underground?
Do you have those answers, sir?
So the property is going to go underground. The rule, I think, it's about six feet regarding that, but I don't know anything regarding radiation. That wasn't mentioned at all.
Maybe your question is there's no radiation. Well, I happen to be a 40 years electrician, so I know there's going to be effect if it's not buried in a concrete and three inches of...minimum three inches of concrete covering it. So when you're coming from the fold to go there, you need a rigid conduit, correct?
Yes.
Rigid conduit, four inch minimum, because the National Grid is 250, size of a wire, 250 kC mill, to go into the building for forehead overhead or 400 amp service for a house.
I think this is 200.
Doesn't matter. Still, it's a four inch rigid. Still, you got to be minimum amount below whatever for your grounding and bounding system, especially if the houses have all new electronic devices. You need isolated ground, otherwise you're going to burn everything. I'm just asking that if that's somebody here...I mean, if I owned the house and that blew up, I'd like to know why my TV keep going on. I get a phone call, go back, fix it, and say, oh, it's the electrician's fault. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Anyone else against? Closing that side. City councilors? Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. When would this job start? If we approve it? You don't know. How long would the job take? And what kind of damage are we going to be doing to the sidewalks, the street, and...
Trench from part of the sidewalk, basically. That's basically it. And then everything else is private property, so they're going to be trenching private property.
Okay. And National Grid's going to fix everything and make it the way that...
That is done by contractors? They should be doing that.
That's...it shouldn't be "should." They are going to be doing that. I don't underst...I know this isn't your fault. This is what I'm talking about. This is a residential area. You guys say we should be repairing this. No, you have to repair it. We're not going to let you do work if you guys are going to come in here and just rip the streets up and then not fix them. This is a constant issue, okay? And I didn't know about this either, to Counselor Nowosowski's point. And I'm sorry you keep coming up here. I give you credit for coming up here and just taking the blows, man, but seriously, we can't get the right people on the phone to get this stuff handled. So lack of communication, we don't even know...we don't even know if it's going to get fixed. It's not guaranteed. It's not written in your information there. You don't know when the job's going to start. So from my perspective, I have residents that are going to call me, asking me what's going on, and then I look foolish because of you guys. So I need some more information before I say okay to this. I want to know when the job's going to start, and I want a guarantee that this is going to be fixed to the place that it is now, at least. Thank you. I would motion to table this, counselor.
Thank you, counselor.
Mr. President.
Counsel Garino Swaya.
Just a point of interest. Back in December, didn't we pass a motion that National Grid needed to give the councilors two weeks' notice on any work being performed within the city? Does everybody recall that? But we did pass it. It was sometime back in December that we requested that National Grid give the council two weeks' notice of any work being performed, because none of us are being notified of anything that National Grid wants to do in the city. They just think that they can come down here, do what they want to do without getting the proper policing as well. And we've had this issue sometime back in December. I wasn't here in December, so I apologize. I don't know. You don't have to apologize, but we need to have ample notice that something needs to be done. It can't be like the last minute, oh, the National Grid's going to do this, and, oh, I think it's going to happen. And I understand it's not you, but maybe the people from the top need to start coming to these meetings instead of sending you, who we pick on. Yes, I understand that. We do. But we need somebody who can answer our questions. Thank you.
Mr. President, may...
Counsel Cogliandro.
I'm sorry, counselor. Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. When this happens, at every meeting, we come after National Grid, and you're taking the blows. From this point, what do you do? You as the person who sits here and gets verbally punched in the face, what do you do after that? Where do you take this information?
I bring that to my supervisor, and then they try bringing up to somebody who can actually answer the question.
So it goes to your supervisor, who...is that Tammy?
No. She's somebody who speaks with the town, as far as I'm aware. But I can speak with her as well.
I would love to know who that...because Tammy is our point of contact, right? So I'm trying to figure out, because it's the same issue every single meeting, so...and I appreciate that you take this information to the person above you, but where it goes from there, just like all these complaints disappear. So...and I'm sorry to take up your...thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. That's all I want to know, is what it sounds like right now is you're doing your job, and then after that, no one's doing their job. So thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor. Counsel McKenna.
I would suggest that the council ask Tammy Sabarito to come up and answer all these questions, because I've been calling her four months, and I like Tammy, but I've been calling her for four months, because I have...I'm going to give you this list of all the lights, because I just went back on my email. There's more than...there's four, six, seven, eight, nine...nine lights out that I've been calling her since December for. So I'm going to give you this list, but I suggest that we invite Tammy Sabarito to come up and then, you know, instead of punching this poor kid every single meeting, and he takes it back to his supervisors and nothing gets done. So I'd like to...is that an amendment or...
I would motion to table this to the next meeting.
Thank you, Counsel McKenna. A motion to table? Tabled.
Calendar item number 16. Hearing called as ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 60 feet of 1-4 inch underground conduit from existing pole number 306 at the corner of Agneus Ave and Broad Sound Ave to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service for 3 Agneus Ave.
Mr. President.
Counsel McKenna.
This is my...
I know. We just got to do proponents first. So petitioner?
National Grid is planning to install approximately 60 feet of 1x4 inch conduit from existing pole number 306 at the corner of Agneus Ave and Broad Sound Ave to private property to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 3 Agneus Ave, Revere.
Thank you. Any proponents? Anyone in favor? Closing that side. Opponents? Anyone against? Closing that side. City councilors? Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Agneus Ave, I know they're putting a new house there, but I had no idea this was happening, just like Counselor Nowosowski, so...
Counselor, I think what we should do here...I'm sorry to interrupt. I think we should table the rest of National Grid's. I think that you should go back to your supervisors. Demand, please. Tell them that we must see Tammy or someone that can answer our questions, or the council here will not approve anything further for National Grid.
I can try to meet with everybody, so with Counselor McKenna for Agneus Ave, with Counselor Novosolsky for the other two, and with Counselor Coliandro for the 73 gauge. I can start... If I can get your numbers, I will personally call you on my work phone, and we can set up meetings, and I can answer any questions. As well as covering the list. That one, I will have to speak with my supervisor, because I have no idea regarding that, so...
Mr. President, it's not so much that... I'm sorry, through you, it's not so much that I don't understand what the job is that you're doing. I just... I want answers. I wanna know about repairs. I wanna know when. I wanna know... I just want a scope of the job, and it seems like we can't even get that. So it's not even that I need to meet with you. They need electricity, right? They need a service. We want the decision-makers up here, because they're sending poor you, and we're not getting anywhere, unfortunately. It's not your fault, again, but we just want someone who has some pull in National Grid to say, sorry, we've disrespected Revere so much by ignoring you, so... And we're just coming up here asking for this, that, and the other thing without giving you any answers or knowledge of the jobs you're doing, so, thank you.
Mr. President, just a leeway.
Counselor McKenna.
Can we get another electrical service to come in and replace National Grid?
That's a conversation for another day, counselor.
I'm only fooling.
So we're gonna table the rest of National Grid? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Rule 34, public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Thank you, members and residents. If you are pursuant to speak under Rule 34, you will come up, give your name, address, the motion you'll be speaking on, and you have two minutes. Please come up. Name and address and the motion you'll be speaking on.
Hi, my name is David Young. Address is 304 Beacon Street, Somerville. So, I'll begin. Good evening, members of the Revere community.
I'm sorry. You're actually... Under Rule 34, you have to be a Revere resident
I see.
To speak in the public comment section.
Okay. I was trying to speak in my Somerville City Council. Unfortunately, I wasn't allowed to. We need like a city counselor to sponsor and order. It's like a very packed meeting, but I felt that this issue is concerning my community and also neighboring communities as well. So I was requesting if I could still speak for two minutes.
What agenda item will you be speaking on?
Local impact of the subversion and transnational repression from the Chinese Communist Party in the local communities in U.S. It is happening now in the past...
So I'm sorry, we don't have that on our agenda, so you really can't speak on that at this time. It's not anything sitting on our agenda. Not that I don't take it very serious, and I appreciate you coming to speak on it. It's just something that we can't handle that here at the council. Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments? Name and address and the motion you'll be speaking on?
Mary Gondolfo, Washington, Evervee. So, this is kinda new, the way you're doing...
What motion will you be speaking on?
That's what I'm wondering. Am I speaking on whatever motions you had?
So, anything that we discussed and that's on the agenda, you have two minutes to discuss it right now.
Okay. Okay, I already discussed the apartment extension of homes. I forget what it's called. I already discussed that. Problems with that. And I... There was something on your agenda about noise.
Yeah, no noise ordinance that's coming into play.
Yeah. I just wanna say, the way things are written a lot, it's very difficult for residents to understand what you're saying. Like, in other words, I just wanna explain one. Section blah, blah, blah of the revised ordinance of Revere hereby amended, removing word nine, inserting the word eight. To me, it's not telling me, and there's multiples of that.
Right.
I need to... We need to have... The residents need to have things written a little easier with more information for us, so we can just look at it and say, oh, yeah.
Right. So once all those changes are made to the amendments, they'll be rewritten, and then they'll be for public eyes?
Yeah, but I might wanna speak about it, and if I knew what it was, I could speak more clearly to you folks about it.
Yes.
I don't know what these changes are gonna be. So that's my problem. The other thing was with all of the... You have on your website the council meeting, and you have the agenda, and then the other, what was it, attachments or something?
Mm-hmm.
I found it extremely hard to go in and out of that attachment, to scroll through it.
I understand that, Ms. Gondolfo, but that's, again, that would be IT, and that's like the city itself? That's not anything that the council works on?
No, but it's okay, because it's really about what you guys are doing. If I can't read it, I can't comment, and it's not fair to the residents. I really... We need to get things clearer and have information.
So our agenda is posted just as we get it. As we read it, that's exactly how it's posted. It's documented that exact way.
Yeah, I know, but someone's writing it. They need to give more information to the residents about what it's about. As I said, Section 6. Section 6. Section 9.08, 100 K, Chapter 9.08 of the revised ordinance, City of Revere, amended by removing the word nine and inserting the word eight.
Right. By law, when you rewrite an ordinance, that's the legal way you have to rewrite the ordinance?
Yeah, but we're wondering what it's about. You're removing a word, a number, and putting another number. What does that mean to me? Nothing. That's all I have here.
Right. So you'd have to read the whole ordinance. That's just one portion of the ordinance that you're looking at. You then go look at the whole entire ordinance and you would be read.
Can they just give us a link to the ordinance, so we can find the information? Without going crazy?
They're all posted in order on... You would have to go in...
I would have to go in and be a researcher. That's what I'm talking about. Who has time for that? And a lot of people are not savvy on the computers.
I understand that.
So you're missing a lot of your residents with information. I don't think it's fair. That's all I'm just saying.
Thank you, Ms. Gondolfo.
I'd like more information on what's going on, and I can't find it.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Can we suspend rules in order to take up the CFO?
Yeah, we're just gonna finish up quick here. Any other people for Rule 34? Sir, what motion, name, address, and what motion you'll be speaking on?
Shawrock, Lygenia, 258 Lanter, apartment number 34. Motion is regarding to Eversource, right? National Grid. If it's a hard work, they need a fireman, and if it's on a main drag or main road, even in an alleyway, they have to have police available, safety hazardous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else looking to speak under Rule 34? Okay, close that. We're gonna suspend the rules and take up Mr. Vizcay to do, I believe, with the retirement issue. Yep.
25 and 26, please.
Counselor Genzio. Ah, yes. Madam, roll call on suspension rules. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 25. Communication from the city auditor relative to a financial analysis for the proposed legislation concerning Leo McCaskill.
Mr. Vizcay.
Thank you, Mr. President and counsel. Thank you for taking me out of order. I appreciate it. I thought this one was particularly important, 'cause it seems like you're about to take a vote on something that you asked for information on, that I would relay after the vote, so... That vote, according to your rules, is to do a financial analysis on anything that you may vote on through special legislation that would affect the unfunded liability of the Revere Retirement Board. I am also the chairman of the Revere Retirement Board, so on behalf of the board, I'm here to let you know that the pending legislation that has been filed on behalf of Officer McGaskill would stand to cost the city's retirement system $302,000 in total. $150,000 of that is attributable to the return of the annuity portion of Mr. McGaskill's pension, and then the $152,000 of that would be attributable to the increased liability to pay out that pension from 72% to 100%. So, this particular law, just to be clear, is a little unique, because not only does it enhance the benefits, but it does require that the retirement system return all money contributed by Mr. McGaskill back to him. So, it's actually a liability that probably shouldn't be incurred by the retirement system, but by the respective department that's proposing this legislation. So, it could otherwise be $150,000 hit to the police department's budget in fiscal year '26, and then the $152,000 increased liability would be part of the annual appropriation increase over the life of the unfunded liability. So, I thought it would be important for you to know that before you voted on it, and I'm happy to answer your questions on it.
Thank you. Councilors? Counselor Genzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. McCaskill, there's a law out there that hire the city to do this if somebody was hurt presently. Mr. McCaskill missed this by just a short period of time. I'm... Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, certainly. I'm not disputing any of those facts. I just...
Oh, no, I'm just clarifying.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So, by doing this, this wouldn't open up Pandora's Box, because this law now exists, and this would be required by the city to do?
I don't know if that's a statement or not, but I'm not gonna confirm or deny that this would open up Pandora's Box. I'm just gonna let you know what it cost for Mr. McGaskill at the time.
Okay. And has the retirement board taken a position on it?
We would not. We would not take a position on it, because it's nothing for us to take a position on. We're just here to explain what the liability would be.
Okay. So now, putting aside Mr. McCaskill, if it were to happen now, the return of all monies that the officer put into the retirement system, would that fall on the department, or would that fall on the retirement system?
Well, we don't feel like it should fall on the entire retirement system, but this is a unique case that we're hearing for the first time, so we've kinda had a lot of discussion about what the total liability is. You'll see the two letters that we got from Parac, who does our actuarial reporting. The first letter just contemplated the increased cost of the pension, but when you read the law, it says all contributions to the retirement system have to be returned to the person, and some believe that that should be borne by the respective department, but...
And who ultimately will make that decision?
I believe it'll be something that's decided. I mean, if it's voted on, that liability comes to the retirement board, and the retirement board may seek to have the department fulfill that $150,000 that we would otherwise
Okay.
Have to return, and then fulfill the pension obligation. So, I don't have a direct answer. I guess we're waiting to see what the verdict is on the vote, and then we'll take it to the board, and then we'll kinda figure it out from there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other councilors? Permission to speak from the chair? Rich. So... $150,000. The Parac letter, am I saying that right, Parac?
Parac's the acronym for the Public Employee Retirement Administration.
Yeah. So, that letter insinuated something about $152,000 to be returned. Does that come out of Mr. McCaskill himself, that money's returned from?
So essentially, anyone in the retirement system's putting in their money. That's their annuity portion, and then the balance that you get from a pension is part of what we fund through our annual appropriation. So, the first thing you have to do is actually return all of the money that the person has contributed. So that $150,000 is handled differently, because it's actually us giving money back today to the retiree. And then the second part of the letter, which was actually given first, is the $152,000, which is the additional cost that it would cost us to fund the pension based upon actuarial assumptions, which are done by Parac on behalf of the city. So they are actually not only the oversight board for the retirement systems, but they also do our actuarial reports that give us the unfunded liability that we have to follow to make sure that we're funded by 2034 in our case, but by 2040 by law. I'm not sure if that helped, but...
A little bit. And how would this impact our assessments moving forward for retirement?
Well, again, it's $304,000 is the impact that we estimate it would be, but $150,000 is just due to the straight give-back of Mr. McCaskill's funds that he's donated since his first time he donated to the... That's the way the law reads. So, we would just apply the law. So, first, we'd have to pay back all the money that he contributed, and then essentially, he'd almost become a non-contribuent retirement beneficiary, because all the money he gave back. Typically, an annuity would run out between 10 and 12 years on a typical retirement, so, you know, it's a defined pension benefit, so some people may pass away early or later, so it's all based upon actuarial assumptions, but that first $150,000 just comes right out. So we know it's $150,000 plus an estimated $152,000.
Okay. So, and so we're looking at $150,000 coming out of retirement, $152,000 possibly coming out of the... Or vice versa, coming out of the department?
Again, I don't wanna say that that's definitely what's gonna happen, but the $302,000 liability would be a shortfall that we currently have in the pension system. The first $150,000 would have to be paid out right away, and then the second $150,000 would actually just come in, additional appropriations needed to fund that 72% to 100%, and that's based upon Parac's actuarial assumptions.
Thank you.
Mr. President, could I have a follow-up question, please?
Counselor.
Mr. Vizcay. So, if, again, if this incident were to happen today, we wouldn't be here. This would just automatically happen?
Correct.
Okay. And if we were to vote on this tonight, then it goes back to the retirement board, and the retirement board makes the determination if it was a violent act? I believe that's what it says in the...
I don't believe we make the determination. I think it's you that's determining that he's entitled to this benefit. So, I don't wanna make pretend I'm an expert on this, 'cause this is a new law, but all I know is that the deadline has come after the fact that this happened. So, the Pandora's Box that you speak of that may or may not be open would be how many people that this happened to prior to the date of this law being enacted that would come and ask for the same type of special legislation. That, I think, is the fear. Not fear, but that's the reality of it.
Okay, so in this, it says here, "If the Revere Retirement Board determines pursuant to said Section 7 of said Chapter 32, as amended, blah, 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 that Leo McCaskill was retired for a violent act injury, all of his retirement benefits dispensed after such determination shall be paid." It does say that the Revere Retirement Board determines...
You read the letter. I believe you're right. Like I said, this is somewhat new, so I stand corrected.
Okay, so we would vote it. We'll go back to the retirement board. The retirement board would look at the situation, decide if it was a violent act?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, may I say, I believe it was a violent act. You know, the guy was almost killed. But how would he get paid with increments or all at once? How would the payout be?
I mean, it would be paid out prescribed by the law, so the first thing we would do is refund all his money that he's contributed, and then his pension would be recalculated at 100% of his benefit versus 72% of his benefit. And that's what the people from Parac calculated and put in this letter, so...
So he would get the $150,000 right off the bat?
Correct.
Bulk, bulk?
Correct.
And then the extra $152,000 would pay it out like he gets a normal check every month?
Yeah, that $152,000 is based upon actuarial assumptions and his lifespan and all that stuff, so it's not a hard and fast figure, but it's an estimate based upon actuarial assumptions.
But it would be paid out monthly?
It would be paid out monthly as an increased benefit to what he would get, so...
Okay.
Let's say if it was $100,000 and he was supposed to get $72,000 a year, he would get $100,000 a year.
Right, right.
And then they put the actuarial valuations on his age and his everything else, but yes.
So, you get the bulk $150,000 right off the bat, if it's approved?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councilors?
Okay, I just wanted to give you all the facts before you voted, so thank you at that. And like I said, the retirement board isn't here to take a position on whether he should or shouldn't. We're just here to report what the liability would be to the system. So, I don't want anyone to think I'm up here as a proponent or an opponent. I'm just here to give you the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Madam Clerk.
Counsel President, this was just a communication. The actual motion is within the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee report.
Thank you. Back to the regular order of business. Oh, yeah, 26. Correct.
Calendar item number 26. Communication from the city auditor relative to the American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Recovery Fund Financial Summary.
Mr. Vizcay.
Okay, thank you. I know it's been a long night, and I know that this council has always been inquiring about the American Rescue Plan Act and how we spent the funds and the status of it, so I did provide you a slide deck presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but certainly also happy to have you put in committee and talk about it there, if that's a choice of the council. So, either way, I just wanted to at least give you an update. The... Just quickly, the commitment of funds from ARPA had to be done by December 31st of 2024. We have committed all the funds. They have to be expended by calendar year 2026, so we're at a point where we've committed all the funds, and now we have to properly spend... now we have to properly spend them by 2026. And again, the slide deck is just to give you a summary of what we spent it on, where it went, and answer any questions. And like I said, I'm happy to discuss in committee or answer any questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any counselors have any questions? Placed on file.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
Thank you. While we're still under suspension, would it be possible to take up item number 18 for the chief?
Please. Madam Clerk, could you please take up a motion to suspend the rules? Yeah, we are. Chief.
That's under the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Do you want me to report out on that item, and then the chief can speak on it?
Counselor Gennzio.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item that we discussed tonight in Legislative Affairs was a motion presented by Counselor Gennino concerning the retirement of the police officer Leo McCaskill. We discussed this, and we voted unanimously to look upon this favorably, so I am asking for a roll call to look on this particular item favorably.
Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve an act providing for violent act injury retirement benefits for retired police officer Leo McCaskill? Counselor Gennzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gennino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herramio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the special act has been approved?
Chief.
Counsel President? I just want to thank the council for this matter, and it's very beneficial for former Officer Leo McCaskill. He always did a tremendous job for the community. 25 years he served in the Police Department, and, you know, unfortunately, he was severely injured apprehending a robbery suspect. And, you know, there's nothing else we can really do for him except support him. He supported us, and I can clearly see the council here is supporting him, and I just want to thank you and the men and women of the Revere Police Department. Thank you as well for your support with this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Back to the regular order of business.
Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Gennzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that was before us was an ordinance further amending a food truck locations specifically for the Revere Historical Society parking lot. There was some discussion about the truck plugging into the historical commission so there wouldn't be any noise from a generator or any kind of harming of the children through exhaust. So we looked on this favorably, and I would like to call for a roll call to look on this favorably.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
Sorry, just want to submit a substituted motion. We actually spoke, Councilwoman Garino Swaya helped facilitate, and we spoke with the DPW Director, Chris Charmella, and we just wanted to make sure that we can, in order to ensure that there's no noise and no emissions near the park, that this is something that can get plugged into the Historical Society building, and just wanted, if we can add an amendment to the motion, to direct the DPW to make those accommodations so that the power grid at the structure can hold, you know, can provide that power. So I will ask for a roll call on that substitute motion, or amendment, if you will. Yeah.
Counselor? Go ahead.
Would you be revising, so it looks like when you're talking about the location, you want to just extend that sentence to say that the DPW, the food truck at this location shall be electric only, no generator use, and shall be plugged into the...
Point of affirmation.
Counselor, state your point.
I think somewhere in this needs to be added that we are going to provide a dedicated circuit because that building will never hold a plug from that truck. So we're going to have to create a dedicated service, and it's going to cost some money, and I think that needs to be part of it.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
Sorry, yeah, that's my point about making appropriate accommodations. So the DPW, they're going to be the experts, or they'll contract out the work to figure out who can do the work, but that's my point about appropriate accommodations. Is that satisfactory to you, Counselor Zambudo?
Yeah, I think you need to provide a dedicated service, and we're going to expect to pay for that, which, you know, might be as much as 500 bucks or something, but it's not going to, that building will never hold, the circuits will never hold a truck plugged into that building without doing a separate circuit.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Emilio?
Yeah, so just the substitute motion amendment, but I think Counselor Garino Swaya wanted to add something.
Counselor Garino Swaya.
After speaking with Chris Charmella, he said that they don't need more than a 10 amp, and they can plug it right into the building. That's what he said. So I actually have a picture of the amperage that they have outside. So otherwise, the DPW will make the appropriate accommodations, but it says they shouldn't need more than a 10 amp.
Okay, so I guess we have to amend it to say if a 10, more than a 10 amp is needed?
Whatever the appropriate accommodation is. Yeah, whatever the DPW thinks is the appropriate accommodation is what we should do that way, because we're not, none of us, I mean, I don't know, maybe...
Mr. President?
Counselor.
Counselor Novoselfsky requesting?
Counselor.
Thank you, sir. As I stated when I was witnessing, yeah, speaking to the council, I'm against this. I don't like the location or the time. And I'll tell everybody again, this is a, it is a parking lot, but the times that they want it are exactly when the kids for the immaculates get out of school, and the parents are always looking for parking spaces. And it's crazy around there during coming in school and going out of school. I think they ought to find another place to do it, and especially around those times, 3:30 to 7:00. And now that they're adding electricity and all this kind of stuff, are we going to give a food truck, a private vendor, free electricity? Are we going to make them pay for the new circuit, the breaker that we have to put into the building? You know, I think this is wrong, you know, and I will not vote for this.
Okay, Counselor Garino Swaya.
I agree with Counselor Novoselfsky to a point that I mentioned it before. The school does get out at that time, so I didn't think we should start this till 4:00 PM. We should not have allowed them to go in there until 4:00 PM, until all the schools have cleared out. And as far, I did ask if we could charge them. Chris Charmella said there's no way of the city to figure out how much that they would owe by using the electricity from the building, but also the Brendan who is in charge of the Historical Museum does want this in his parking lot. He has called most of his counselors and let us know that he is completely in favor of it. So I don't know how you want to proceed with this, but if we can amend it to say 4:00 PM, if everybody's okay with changing it to 4:00 to 7:00 PM, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. President? Sorry.
Counselor.
Thank you. Can we put a grace period on this? If it doesn't work, you know, give them three months, do a grace period, and if it works, great, continue. But if it doesn't work, then they got to leave.
Mr. President?
We should put this back in committee with the number of amendments that we're throwing out here right now.
Can I offer an amendment that encapsulates all these amendments, just to get this over with?
Please.
Okay, so just a substitute amendment to the substitute amendment, if you will, that we add the language around the appropriate accommodations, that we strike in Section 3, the number, the hour, 3:30 to 4:00 PM, and that we add Section 4, that the city, that the city institute a nominal fee for any of the trucks who are trying to be there, and that the ordinance sunset after a period of six months, at which point the city council can reconsider.
Madam Clerk, can you roll call that, please?
Well, that wasn't section, that last piece were all in Section 4, so... So Section 4 will, so Section 3, we're replacing the number, the hour, 3:30. Oh, that's 5.10 dot 050. That's the time?
Well, is it subsection A?
Subsection B, sorry. Subsection B, yep.
So change the hours, but the location of, for the electrical, I think it would make more sense if we discussed that in the areas or hours of operation?
Yeah, so subsection B again, but in Section 4 of the ordinance. So Section 4 of the ordinance would read Section 5 dot 10 dot 0.5B. Now, maybe we just put this in committee.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a substitute motion to put this back into Legislative Affairs so we can get this corrected the way that everybody wants it, and then we can vote on this when it's all said and done. No disrespect to anybody.
We have a motion on the floor to put back in Legislative Affairs.
Yes.
All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
So the third item that was before us is an ordinance further amending the noise control ordinance of the City of Revere. We discussed this. We all voted in favor, so I'm asking for a roll call to look on this favorably.
Madam Clerk, roll call the members. On a second reading as amended.
Noise control.
Ordered on a final and a third as amended. Roll call for engrossment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending noise control ordinances in the City of Revere as amended? Counselor Gennzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gennino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herramio? Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna? Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky? Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri?
No.
No, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you, Mr. President. The fourth item was an ordinance further amending fire safety regulations in the City of Revere as concerned fire watches. We voted in favor of this, so I'm asking that the, ask for a roll call, looking in favor of this.
On a second reading? And final reading? Roll call for ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending fire safety regulations in the City of Revere? Counselor Gennzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gennino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Herramio? Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna? Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Thank you. The last item before us was a motion by Counselor Cogliandro to change the times for the Council Ways and Means Subcommittee just concerning budget hearings, and we looked favorably about sending this to a public hearing, so I'd like a favorable vote to send this to a public hearing.
Vote to a public hearing? All in favor, all opposed?
Communications, calendar item number 23, Communication from the Mayor Relative to the Appointment of Diana Cardona to the Public Art Commission.
I'll go to appointments.
Calendar item number 24, this was, I'm sorry, the agenda description was incorrect. This was a communication from Claire Enzarella, City's policy writer and analyst, in response to Counselor Novoselfsky's motion that the mayor request the city solicitor to draft an ordinance regulating the placement, installation, and removal of satellite dishes.
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. This president took two years to get an answer on this, but let me say, overall, I'm not happy with this communication. It's obvious, you know, that everybody here does not like to see the overwhelming abuse of satellite dishes on houses. Some of them have seven and eight dishes, and probably half of them don't work, and according to the city solicitor, we can't do anything about it. But I would like for you to put this in a committee so we can discuss it, because they did say we can advise tenants and landlords about when they leave, when a tenant leaves, they have to take their dish, repair the building, and take the dish with them, or take the dish, because it actually belongs to them, not to the dish company. So I would like to discuss this further, and hopefully you can put it in someone's committee, and we can talk about this further and see what we can do about it.
Where would you like to put it, Counselor?
Yeah, hello. Economic Development.
Okay. We'll place this in Economic Development. All in favor, all opposed?
Aye.
Agenda items 27 through 37 are all appointments.
Madam Clerk, I believe these are all appointments to Elder Affairs. Could we take them all up at once?
You have to ask...
It's going into appointments.
Okay.
Appointments. You have to go to appointments.
Appointments Committee.
So we're going to put them all in at once? Okay, so 27 to 37 will be referred to Appointments Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 38, Motion Presented by Counselors McKenna and Cogliandro that the mayor be requested to proceed with purchasing two new snow-removal machines for the purpose of clearing all main sidewalks around the city, especially around schools and transit stops. The DPW currently has one old snow-removal machine, which is not sufficient enough to cover the entire city, citing numerous complaints from residents that sidewalks abutting city-owned property are not maintained or not maintained timely.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. The DPW has only one old sidewalk snow machine to do the city, the whole city's main arteries. They definitely need some new equipment. It would be reasonable for the city to invest two new sidewalk machines at the superintendent of Public Works discretion. A couple of facts on the previous storms that I'd like to the public to know. That there's an ordinance in place since 2018 stated that all residents and businesses must shovel in front of their properties within 24 hours of a storm. A failure to shovel will resolve in a fine. Residents can call 311 and report an unshovel sidewalk anywhere in the city, even if it's your neighbor. The city should also hold Mass DOT and DCR accountable for their sidewalks, which a lot of them weren't shoveled. If there's any other ice storms like the previous one, residents of Revere...
residents of Revere can pick up free rock salt from the city yard on Charger Street. I know there was rock salt, no one had rock salt in all the stores. Uh, the, the salt is located in the beginning of the city yard in a yellow bin. You must have a bucket when you pick up, pick it up. Nothing will be provided for you. And lastly, I would like to commend the DPW workers and the plow drivers for a wonderful job that they did clearing the streets and sidewalks during the last couple of snowstorms. I know the, this past snowstorm was really tough because we had seven inches and then rain, and it turned to ice. So it was really, really deplorable, but I have to give a shout out to the DPW. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this machine we're looking to get costs roughly $4,000. This is kind of a no-brainer. We, we should do it. The machine we have now is too big for the sidewalks. And I also would like to thank, we've had a lot of, a lot of storms and a lot of plowing and sanding needs for the city, so I have to thank personally Chris Fabiano. He's my Lord and Savior when it comes to these things. Uh, I text him, and he magically gets these things done, and all the guys in the, on the DPW and the subcontractors, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselvsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor McKenna, I am so glad you put this in.
Thank you.
Because I know that they have a bobcat that can barely make some of the sidewalks,